A quorum of the city council being present. Let us all rise to salute the flag and then pause for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Welcome to the special meeting, September 29th, of the Cambridge City Council. This meeting is being recorded with audio and visual devices. We're going to start the meeting with the call. You are hereby notified to attend a special meeting of the city council for Thursday, September 29, 2016, at 5:30 in Sullivan Chamber. This meeting was called by order of the Honored Mayor. The purpose of this meeting is to vote on extending an offer to a finalist for the position of city manager and to designate an acting city manager to serve in that capacity until a new city manager is appointed. Additionally, the city council may meet an executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with the prospective city manager or to conduct negotiations with the prospective city manager. The city council may vote to request that the city enter into a contract with outside council to advise the city council in its contract negotiations with the prospective city manager. This meeting may be subject to the rules of the city council as amended. So before we get into the body of the meeting, I just have a few opening remarks. We're going to then hear from Nancy Glowa, our city solicitor, after which the floor will be opened for public comment. There is a sheet. It was a sheet. There's a sheet that's available. I'm going to send it back just in case someone else wants to sign up. Oh, okay. People can sign up on the sheet that is at the front. After the public comment is closed, then we will open the council floor for debate. I would like to extend an invitation to Nancy Glowa to come forward just to go through some important items that have come up in discussion regarding the city manager search process. Ms. Glowa, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was asked to speak to the council regarding a particular question which relates to the public release of two documents related to the city manager search process. These two documents were given to the city council, I believe, sometime Monday or Monday evening. One of them is a summary of comments from community meeting, city council interviews, and the website. And the other document is a summary of panel interviews and interview scoring from those panel interviews. And Monday night during the council meeting, we received a public records request for those meetings after one of the councillors, I believe councillor Marr, stated that, based upon advice from the Law Department, they weren't public at this time. We subsequently conducted our review and our legal research on Tuesday and determined that these were both public records. And thereafter, they were released to the public.
Does that conclude your comments?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. That's what I was asked to speak on. If there's anything else, of course, I'm happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions from the council before we move to the next step? The councillor, Craig Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Ms. Glowa. Just to clarify, this wasn't an option that we felt we had. The document was created and, once it was created, it became a public document? Or how does that work?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes. We looked carefully at all of the available exemptions pertaining to evaluations and personnel information. Since this is now part of the public process where the city council is interviewing candidates, and since these panels included members of the public as well as city employees, it was determined that there was no exemption that applied and that therefore these documents were public records.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Deveraux?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Ms. Glowa. Have the identities of the people who served on the panels been made public? Because I don't know who they were.
Ms. Glowa.
Through you, Madam Mayor. No, not to my knowledge.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Glowa. Before we go to public comment, it's important for me to announce publicly, as we came to this finalist process, there were three candidates. One of those candidates, Jay Ash, has pulled his name from contention, so he will not be in the final consideration of candidates for city manager. I say that for two reasons. One, as we go forward as a council to deliberate, you'll know that we will not be deliberating over three candidates, we'll only be deliberating over two. So we cannot, by our rules, deliberate or talk about someone who is no longer in contention. And I say that before we start public comment, we cannot make remarks about a candidate whose name is not in contention. We have two candidates still. Mr. Ash is not one of those. So as we go into public comment, I would remind people to speak, if they speak about candidates in particular, they cannot bring up a name of someone who is not any longer in the running. We will now move to public comment. Public comment is that part of the meeting where any individual can speak to an item before us. The items before us are the candidates, the two left standing, Mr. Featherstone and Mr. Deepesquali, for a period of three minutes. The clerk will be running the time. At 2:45, you'll hear a series of beeps, which means you have 15 seconds to wind up your comments. Thank you. Our first person that has signed up for public comment is Donald Sheen, followed by Katifi Kirande. Yes. Your mic isn't on.
Do you think I should know that? I'm an electrician. Not a technician, though. Madam Mayor, councillors, thank you for your time. I will not take the three minutes. I know you're very busy, you have a lot on the agenda, and I'm going to speak strictly to the issue. I know it's a very tough job trying to select a city manager, all the great candidates you have, but I'm going to ask you this. Please keep in mind that we, from the building trades, are looking for somebody to support our values. We need companies that come into Cambridge and work. They're going to hire Cambridge residents. They're going to pay and have a pension system, have healthcare and an apprenticeship. As you may have seen coming in tonight, we have a company right down the street here that does not do that. So if you could please keep that in mind when interviewing and selecting this person, that they have some of those values. It means a lot to us. It means a lot to the people that live in this community. We happen to have a company that's in from New York. Nobody lives in Massachusetts that works on that project down the street at 625, Mass Ave. So if you will keep that in mind, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is, it looks like Katifi? And if you could say your name and maybe spell it for us, that'd be great.
My name is Katiti Kirande, and I've been a Cambridge resident for over 50 years. And one of the things that is really concerning me is the development that's going on in this city that seems to be out of control. And whether or not the city councillors or the manager knows this, there's whisperings that Cambridge is for sale. We need somebody who comes in here who can balance this for us and really think about us, because, for example, I'm a small landlord. I own two properties. And last year, when I was renting, I did quite well. And this year, when I went to rent, the rental agent said to me, "Well, there's a glut on the market, and these big developers are here offering people three, four months' free rent in order to, you know, to entice them." Well, I can't afford to do that. And the real estate lady said to me, "Well, you know, these guys are in the pocket of the city councillors are in the pocket of these people." The fact that people think that, by the way, not all of them, but the fact that the citizens out there are thinking that is not good for the city council. So we need somebody at the head to take a grip of this thing, because it really is feeling like our city's out of control. And it's not as though I'm saying, "Well, we own Cambridge and we don't want other people to come in." No, but we do want to preserve a certain quality of life. We don't want all the congestion. You drive by our reservoir, it's practically dry. There's just, development is just rampant around here, and there needs to be something done. And we need somebody at the helm who can really take control of this and help us out, because we want to preserve Cambridge.
Thank you. Is there anyone that has not signed up to speak that would like to speak on the record before we close public comment? Hearing none. Pleasure of the city council. On a motion by-
Madam Mayor, I think our public comment traditionally stays open until 6:00, so I would recommend that we spend public comment and start talking and then we can-
Okay. Councillor Kelly asks that we keep public comment open to 6 o'clock. If no one has any objection, then we will do that and we will move on to the meeting. I would like to give councillor Marr an opportunity to speak, give a brief historical account of the process, after which I will turn it back to myself for opening remarks, and then we'll open the floor for discussion. Councillor Marr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I want to thank my colleagues and thank all of the members of the public who have participated, and the staff folks who have participated in this process. As you know, Mr. Rossi informed the council back in March that he would not be seeking an extension to his current contract. And the council entered into a process over the past six months. And I want to just kind of run through this, that it was in April that we developed the RFP in consultation with the purchasing agent, Amy Witz, who assisted the council significantly in the development of that. The RFP evaluation committee was formed in April and May, and I want to acknowledge and thank councillor Carlon, councillor Deveraux, councillor Kelly, and Vice Mayor McGovern, who along with three city staff members, all high-ranking staff members of the city, formulated that evaluation committee. As a result of that committee, Gov HR was hired. They were selected unanimously by the group, and Gov HR was the search firm that worked with the city council over the past many months to conduct this search. In particular, I want to thank Joelle and Earl and Heidi Vordhe, am I saying that correctly? I'm looking at Sheila, and Lee, their associate, who all worked with us in this process. As you know, that we developed a list of focus groups that we wanted to be conducted as part of this, meeting with many members of the public, as well as everything from large and small businesses to the universities to neighborhood associations. And in fact, we conducted, or they conducted, more than 30 focus groups during the month of June. In early July, as a result of all the information that was gathered, there was a leadership profile that was developed, which really helped to explain to prospective candidates what the city of Cambridge was all about and what type of person we were looking for to head the city for the next many years. In July and August, Gov HR conducted a multi-pronged recruitment effort, and they started to prescreen, so to speak, candidates. In August, we had the preliminary screening committee was formed, and the preliminary screening committee consisted of 15 folks that fit into categories. There were resident representatives, there were large business representatives, small business representatives, representative, a Cambridge public school representative, public safety, person with demonstrated knowledge of municipal finance, a health and human service, public health representative, a representative with knowledge of city planning or urban development, a higher educational representative, a public art or recreational representative, an affordable housing representative, a nonprofit representative, and a representative who advocates for the quality of our community's civic and social well-being. And in addition, there were four city councillors who participated in that process, councillor Chung, councillor Maz, and councillor Toomey, and myself. And that committee was put together, excuse me, was appointed by the mayor. That committee's job really was to look at the candidates that Gov HR had presented. And Gov HR had taken the applications, which were approximately 55 people from across the country had applied for the job of city manager here in Cambridge. They had kind of tiered the candidates and presented to the group all 55 names, but they had the 15 people that they thought were the highest or the most qualified candidates. And so there was an in-depth review of those 15 candidates. That group, the preliminary screening committee, had the authority to basically decide who was going to be interviewed by the preliminary screening committee. And they offered interviews to, I'm trying to remember my numbers here, they offered interviews to eight individuals. And of the eight, six people took the committee up on their invitation to interview. The committee conducted those interviews, and I want to just say to folks in the community, these folks gave up three full days of their time, in every case had to be there for a training day and a day that we went over the resumes, and then to go through two other full days of interviews, and then the decision-making aspect of that. So I want to thank all of the members of the preliminary screening committee for the great work that they did in presenting to the city council the top three qualified candidates. So what you saw is, at the end of that process, was three names being forwarded to the city council. Those three individuals went through then a series of interviews and getting to know you, one of which was the public town hall, which occurred at the high school on 9/20. The second was the city council public interviews that were held here on 9/21. In addition, the three candidates met in small groups with the city council, and each city councillor was able to spend time over a breakfast or lunch with each of the three candidates, to get to, kind of informally, get to meet those candidates. We, late in the process, added, there was some time in between the breakfast and the lunch and the other lunch and the town hall, so what we did is we added some panels. And we had, we had three different panels, and we invited in, Sheila, Katie, Ross, and myself looked at inviting in city staff who were both in a managerial capacity but in a line capacity, as well as a number of individuals who had applied to be on the screening committee who were not selected. So there were about, we extended the invitation to about 50 people, and I believe about 42 or so, 40?
Twenty-seven.
Was it, was that what it was? Twenty-seven, I'm sorry. Twenty-seven people took us up on that, because it was a commitment that had to be made over two days, again, that they had to be here for all three hours. We didn't want somebody to meet one candidate and not meet another, so we required that they had to be in on all three. And let me just make sure I'm right here, so that was the 21st and the 20th and the 21st. And here we are on September 29th. As I had mentioned the other night, in addition, Gov HR did some additional reference checking. Those references were available to the council to peruse and look at. I know that many, we received many emails and letters, and there was no shortage of opinions from folks that had seen the interviews or had seen the public forum. In addition, we invited, at every juncture, we invited the public to offer written comments and to turn that in. And that was what Ms. Glowa talked about, because that available was kind of gathered together and it was given to the council on Monday. It was released to the public on Tuesday. And I also want to just thank several people that helped tremendously in this long, six-month process, including Nancy Glowa, the city solicitor, Fran Cronin, who works for me in my office, Lee Janetti, who made sure that all of the public documents were made available in a timely fashion, Sandra Albano, who helped coordinate the site visits, excuse me, the visits of all of these candidates into Cambridge, and Mary Ellen Cavalo, who also was a tremendous help. And with that, that brings us to this evening, and it is my hope that folks have been able to reach a decision based on not one of these things, but kind of all of these things together. And I would just add that I think that we've been able to see these candidates, to meet them privately, we've been able to see how they handle themselves in front of a larger group, we have seen how they answer questions in a room like this that is televised. Some of us have seen how these folks conducted themselves in the confidential aspect of the process in those initial interviews. And so I think we have had a variety of ways of judging how these candidates present and what they are about, and I'm delighted that this is all coming to an end.
Thank you, councillor Marr.
Thank you.
The floor is now open for discussion. Councillor Chung.
Thank you. So I just wanted to echo the words of thanks to councillor Marr to the public, although I, you know, I'm sure many of my colleagues have had calls saying, you know, "What do you think? Who are you doing?" And it's been said, you know, I can't answer that, I'm not sure yet, I'm trying to get information in. But all the people that have written in, that have emailed in, even if I haven't emailed back directly answering questions, I really appreciate the public getting so interested and so involved and being proactive about weighing in with the council and letting us know what's important to you as we make our decision. I also wanted to echo the thanks to the staff who have put a lot of overtime and hours into making this process run as smoothly as it has to you, Mayor Simmons, and especially to councillor Marr. I think you have run the best process for selecting a city manager that we have ever had in our entire history as a city of Cambridge. True, we have not done this before, but I think regardless, I think this was an extremely thorough, this was an extremely thorough process. We hired one of the best consulting firms available in the country. They brought in, I think, a tremendous panel of candidates for the selection committee and for the council, and for the screening committee to consider. I know that there's, you know, we had multiple opportunities for the public to get involved, to get engaged. We had lots of opportunities for the council, as you mentioned, to see the candidates in different, from different perspectives, whether it's on this floor, in front of the public, talking individually. We had lots of opportunity for, I think, us to see how they're interacting with the communities. I think that was all very beneficial to the council in terms of making a decision. And also, I think that, you know, there's inevitably criticism, you know, that, and I want to speak to one directly, which is about why isn't there more diversity in the pool of candidates we have to select from? And so I served on the board of the National League of Cities for multiple years, was down at their board of chiefs, went to the International City Managers Association meetings, and felt there what I often feel, what I often noticed, I was in a room of a bunch of white men. You know, and this expectation that Cambridge should have just a more diverse candidate pool at the end result. I subscribe to that goal, but sitting in that room and seeing all the city managers across the country, I know that it's not necessarily realistic. I think that, conversely, Cambridge is going to have to be in the position of being a net exporter of diversity. We have a clear value of diversity in this city. We have, we're a sanctuary city, we're constantly trying to, talking about bringing people in and making sure that the community reflects the public, that the staff reflects the public, and then investing in our staff. I think that we're going to be a net exporter and having to raise people up, get people in, making city manager offices across the country more diverse, because I've seen other city manager offices, and they're not as diverse as ours is. And so, well, I would love to be in a world where we put a call for applicants and we had a really diverse pool. I don't fault, I think there can be no fault placed at the feet of the consultant or councillor Marr, because it just is the reality that we live in a world where racism and prejudice continues to exist. And we are, I think, a leader in fighting that, and that leadership is going to come in the place of giving leadership experiences and promotions and development to candidate, to people that want to work in city offices. I think ultimately, as I think about this decision, I just want to say, I think the council ultimately has the responsibility to choose, to make this decision, as we're going to tonight. And we're facing very, very serious challenges. We're in the middle of a housing crisis. You know, our technology use in the city is, you know, we don't even have credit card meters, our pay-by-phone meters like Boston and Somerville do. We have, we have put so much on our planning department that the department is, you know, threatening to collapse under the sheer weight of all that we've put on their plate. We have a police and fire department that are still without a contract. As we've heard earlier tonight, we have organized labor who's still struggling to realize in real terms the values that we as a council have endorsed, and we need to support them in that. And I think also, as I said, this feeling that Cambridge is for sale. I want to make sure that we have somebody who doesn't come in as a city manager thinking that, as Cambridge is a project or a job, has something to solve, but as somebody who's living, that very real feeling that the public has expressed and that I think all of us share, and that we need to balance all of this out and make sure that we're serving our residents, that we're keeping all that as good. Cambridge is a leading city in, when it comes to environment, when it comes to finances, when it comes to placing fire, when it comes to leading on moral issues and economic issues. We need to keep all of that going, but at the same time, make some bold choices and bold decisions to solve the challenges that we're all dealing with and that our residents have expressed to us. So, you know, I, just to say, tonight, we had three tremendous candidates who came and that we had the opportunity to speak to. They all had really great qualities. I'm ultimately going to want to support Louis Deepesquali for this next city manager for a few reasons, and I just wanted to express them to my colleagues and also to the public at large. The Cambridge has a lot of balls in the air. We've got Envision Cambridge, we're trying to make sure that we're keeping the city affordable for residents, which, we have so many projects going on, from Volpe to Alway to, you know, improvement of our schools, to building new buildings. There's a lot of stuff that the city is currently doing. And Louis is going to be able to step in day one, knowing where all those balls are, and how to catch them and keep them in the air. And I think it's no knock to any other candidate, but they would ultimately, if somebody hasn't been working here, they have to step in and try to figure out, you know, where is everything, do an assessment. And I don't want to lose anything that's going, that's currently in the air. I don't want to lose any of the good that Cambridge is doing for the fact of us trying to do better. But we do need to do better. And Louis also, I would say, has a track record of delivering on the impossible. I don't know how many times he's come to the council and said, "We want to redo four schools," as councillor Marr came in with when he was mayor. "We want to build a new library," you know, going back. And he's had an ability over the years to, he's like Scotty from Star Trek. We ask him to do the impossible, he tells us it's impossible, and then all of a sudden, it's like he's got a printing press for, he's got a money printing press in the basement or something. He somehow manages to pull it all together and figure out how we can accomplish our goals financially. And finance is a bit like lawyers. You know, you go to a lawyer, they can tell you why not, how things will not work. Finance is the same way. You can go to the finance guy and they'll tell you why you can't afford something. But then there was, there are some lawyers and there are some finance guys who will figure out the trick- figure out the tricks in the book and how to make things work so that you can actually do what you want to do. And I think Louis is not just recognized across the country as one of the best financial leaders, but also recognizes somebody who knows how to put finances together and make it work to achieve our goals, to achieve our objectives, to do the best for the community, not just to tell us why we can't do something. I will also say, I think, you know, people might say, alpha criticism for ultimately supporting an internal candidate. I don't think that was, that was not in any way predetermined from the outset. I think he emerged, a lot of people, we didn't even know that he was going to be putting his hat in the ring for running for city manager. He emerged, though, as the best. And I don't think that should be a surprise, frankly, even though no one expected that. Cambridge is a leading city when it comes to, when it comes to finance, when it comes to, you know, we've put more into affordable housing than any other community in Massachusetts. We've done more for, we have so many services for our residents. We're leading on health, we're leading on environment, we're leading on police, fire, we're leading in so many areas. I don't, it should not be, it is a bit of a surprise, but it should not be a surprise that we frankly have the best talent of any city in the country. And I think we did not, didn't know that Louis was going to run, didn't know really what to expect from this process. But I think through it, I've gotten a deeper understanding of exactly why Cambridge has been so successful, because we have such talented people. And it's counterintuitive, but I don't think it should come to a surprise as anybody in the public to know that when you were looking for a city manager, it's not a surprise that we have the best candidates right here in Cambridge. So for all those reasons, I'm going to be supporting Louis Di Pasquale to come in as our next city manager for Cambridge. And I don't think that, you know, I would tell it to him, my support of him is not because I want necessarily just continuation of the status quo. I want him to support our employees, I want him to value our employees, because they are the best in the country. I want him to keep everything going that is going right for Cambridge. But I also want him to come in with an expectation that he has, that we're expecting him to make some pretty bold choices and do things differently, because we have severe challenges in housing, we have severe challenges in transportation, we have severe challenges in making sure that we close the achievement gap. And we want somebody who's going to come in and bring in fresh ideas. If he doesn't have those ideas, go and find them and then bring them in, but really provide some bold leadership and work with the council and the community and the staff to make sure that we're doing everything we possibly can do to make life better for our residents in all those areas. So that's my, too, Ben. Sorry for going on a little bit long, but I want to make sure that the public understands that this is not just a back-of-the-hand decision, that this is, I think, very thought-through for myself, and I'm assuming for all my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Chung. Councilor Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too support Louis. It's actually an odd place for me to come to. When it first started, I didn't know what to expect, and I didn't think that I would wrap my arms so thoroughly around him, but he has very much impressed me during the various interview processes that we had. In particular, I think that he gets finances in a way that no one else does, which is super important. I would say it's also the biggest weakness I see on Louis' part, because I never heard him during the talk that he had with us, express the downside of the strong finances, which is an immense amount of development that is in fact changing things in a way that not everyone is comfortable with. And I think we as a council are going to have to help Louis understand that there are two ways to look, probably more than two ways, but at least two ways to look at tax revenues. I was super impressed at the way he has a vision for approaching our university and business partners, and how we can work with them to help our schools, to help our nonprofits, to help our communities, design systems as partners, rather than having everything be a one-off for individual people. I was very, very impressed with his repeated statements that when you go into City Hall, you should be able to find someone doing something that looks like you, and his explanation that he has led that process in his department. I think as a council, we're going to have to continue to push him. I could go on at length about why I'm voting for Louis, but I think the challenge isn't with Louis. The challenge is with us and whoever succeeds us as a council, to be really clear about what is worth the city's time, what we really care about, and what trade-offs we're willing to make. And my advice to Louis when I talked to him was, should, and I said this to all three of the candidates, should you get the position, you need to be able to push back on us and say, no, that's just not something that is worth my time. And we all need everyone to be able to walk away from these positions if it comes to that, the relationships properly with good communication, which I fully expect it will not come to that. But I am excited about working with Louis. And, you know, honestly, if you'd asked me years ago that I would be saying this, I wouldn't be, but he has thoroughly convinced me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kelly. I don't believe anyone else signed up for public comment, so I'd like to entertain a motion to close public comment. On a motion by the vice mayor to close public comment, all those in favor say aye. Oppose? The ayes have it, public comment is now closed. We go now to the vice mayor. You have the floor.
Thank you. So I too would like to thank everybody from the community for participating, whether that was being a part of the steering committee, a focus group, sending us emails, coming to the public forums. I want to thank Councilor Marr as well for leading the process. And I'd like to thank the candidates themselves who applied to be our next city manager. It was a demanding process, and we were fortunate to have three strong finalists. So I based my decision on who I thought would be the best fit for our community. All the finalists have impressive resumes, so the choice was not an easy one. Being the city manager takes someone who's able to work with the community and the council in a true partnership. It takes someone willing to think creatively, but not recklessly. And in my opinion, Louis Di Pasquale is that person. Louis is known for being collaborative, a collaborative experience, passionate, open-minded, and respectful person. He's flexible and willing to compromise. His civic engagement goes well beyond his professional life, and his understanding of our community is unmatched. We need to look no further than the document discussed Monday night outlining our accomplishments over the past three years, to see that we are doing things that no other city is doing. No community is rebuilding four schools without state money, while at the same time expanding early childhood education, moving toward becoming a net-zero community, and many other initiatives, all while providing a level of service and public safety second to none. Now, does that mean we should keep the status quo? Absolutely not. We must never be complacent. But I believe that Louis, if given the chance to lead, will be a city manager of vision and will be willing to think of new ways to keep Cambridge moving forward. And that's why I'm supporting him for city manager. Thank you.
Vice Mayor McGovern. Pleasure, the city council. Councilor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to thank you for appointing me to the committee. It was quite an honor to be part of this process. And to all those individuals who served on that, I think it was four, five days that they gave up of their time to serve the city in the selection process. It was a tremendous experience for all of us. There were many opportunities for the public to weigh in, with community forums, at the high school, here at the city council chamber, people stopping you on the street, giving their opinion. A lot of emails came in on, weighing in on this issue. And it was quite remarkable to see how it all unfolded. And to be, to be part of that, I think it was the first, out of history, is part of the first actually selection process for city manager under Plan E. And so it was quite something. People worked very hard on that. And I want to thank Councilor Marr and our personnel director, Sheila, for being very informed and keeping us to the issues, what we were, where we could stray and not stray, and asking certain questions in the process. So it really was, like I said, an honor to be part of that. There were great candidates that applied for this position from around the country. And it was great to sit, be part of it, to hear different perspectives from around the country and within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and how people would bring their talents and their experience to the position of city manager in the seat of Cambridge. And each one was quite different and unique in their own ways. And it was, it helped me a lot to appreciate what we have here, you know, and to help reform my decision. They were all great candidates, the finalists, one, I think withdrew at the last, well, even one of the eight withdrew for personal reasons from Texas. And so there was, I think, six that we ended up, intensive interviews with. And after listening to everybody, after talking to a lot of people and the community and within the city, I have come to my decision to vote for Mr. Louis Di Pasquale as our next city manager. Some of the emails that came in recently mentioned about vision, and I just feel that Mr. Di Pasquale has tremendous vision for the city. He's a product of our school system, growing up in the city, has seen the major changes that have taken place in the city, and I believe his vision is to continue the excellence that we have, and most especially, the vision of bringing in people who are currently really not involved in city government, reaching out to people for whatever reasons, just don't seem to be part. And it would be good to get some new perspective here in Monday night's council meetings and at community forums, of people who have, you know, their own ideas too, but for whatever reason, just felt that they, whatever reason, didn't feel comfortable maybe coming to speaking, for whatever reason. But I think he has that vision. He's been in the community for so many years, he's been involved with Babe Ruth and Little League for many years, volunteers at different events. And clearly, the fiscal experience, being part of this city for, I believe it's over 41 years, since 1975, when he first started here. And, you know, can attest to his great character and honesty and his vision for the city, and the commitment to the city and to its residents, whether they're young families, seniors. He's out in the community almost on a daily basis, and he's listening to people and he's learning from people. And I think that's the most important thing, that he's a good listener and takes everyone's and respects everyone's opinion. And so we've had, I've had the great honor of serving under two tremendous city managers and look forward to continuing serving with another great city manager, who will certainly, I believe, put the best interest of all, all of our citizens first. And I think that's so important. So I am proud to say that I will be voting for Mr. Louis Di Pasquale here this evening at the appropriate time. Would like to put that in nomination for a vote, once my colleagues have commented. And I hope that it's successful. And it's not an easy job. It certainly isn't. It's not an easy job. And a lot of people think it's, you know, everything runs so smoothly, but, you know, behind the scenes, there's a lot of things that has to take place. And knowing that Mr. Di Pasquale has seen that inner workings of how to bring people together and to resolve, to come to a acceptable resolution for everybody is just so important. And that's why we need to continue that as we move forward. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Toomey. Pleasure, the city council. Councilor Mazin.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. First, my thanks to Richard Rossi, who has sat in that chair and in that chair and every chair, late into the night, and now getting some much deserved rest, hopefully, in the years and weeks and years to come. It's been a pleasure. Thanks also to Mayor Simmons, to Councilor Marr, for the hard work on this process. Thanks also for the hard work of the candidates, the administrators, the panels, the activists, and the residents, the people of Cambridge. It's been an interesting process, and in many ways, it's been a beautiful process. And to the extent that it's been beautiful, it's been because of the people and because of their love of Cambridge. I don't necessarily know that I always agree with the process, and I'll say below that I don't totally agree with this process, but everyone's love of Cambridge was clear. And no one can be faulted for their hard work along those values. But our highs and our elation just can't completely obviate critical insights, so I'll do my usual thing and say what I think will do better next time. I don't think we appropriated enough money for the search. I think a search like this, if it's truly nationwide, has to be a headhunting search. We didn't headhunt outside of Massachusetts, it's hard for pension reasons, but this is a $275,000-plus position, and the plus is still big money on top of that. We could have really gotten excited candidates from all over the country if we had spent the money and the time to reach out. That's not to say that we didn't get great candidates, it's to say that I think we all recognize, or at least many of us on the inter-search committee, that there's more work to be done in diversity, gender parity, there's more work to be done in creating a really vibrant search discussion within the city. And for all the vibrancy we had, it could have been yet more engagement of the public, more engagement of ideas and commitments and plans, specific commitments, specific commitments to this council and this room. We could have three gentlemen right there vying for who can make the most commitments about specific plans, and not pie in the sky either. These are talented people who know what to promise and how to remain realistic. We did not, as a council, negotiate from a position of strength on those issue commitments and social equity plans, on financing vision. We did not extract promises on new or innovative thinking. This is a city of innovation, and I think we've seen the seeds of that in Rich Rossi's administration. I think, I think we have a lot of time and space ahead of us to make up even more progressive and interesting programming and internal training. And we didn't really consider that type of important discussion in this process. And we didn't even negotiate salary, which is, again, a number into the $300,000s potentially. And we didn't, we didn't negotiate from a position of strength. We're hiring first and negotiating after. Onto the good things. Louis is a great candidate. I feel that our choices have been narrowed some, but still, it's quite possible with all the choices on the table, Louis still would have been the best candidate. And in fact, I think that's probably where my heart lies. It's a difficult decision. I probably support Louis for other reasons than I've heard here. I like his open door, I like his gracious spirit. In line with Rich Rossi's service, he seems like one of the Cambridge's kids, someone who's excited by the job and energetic to serve, and someone who's talked about good government, someone who's talked about hard work, open door. And the phrase of the last week or two weeks for me has been shame on me if, right? Someone who heaps shame upon themselves in order to do better, I think, is a strong candidate for the highest seat in the city, someone who will blame themselves, but not endlessly, just to be better, to strive to be better and to encourage others to be better around him. So I support Louis in this, given his tenure in the city, his experience, but I do so with specific hopes. I hope that we will take a serious look at going beyond inclusionary housing and into proactive, city-led and city-owned housing, on our parking lots, on properties that we can make more aggressive plays for through our bonding schedule. I hope that we will talk about, seriously talk about, social equity and educational equity, and really think about job training for jobs in Kendall Square. There are a host of national, state, and local programs that can aid us in this. I want to talk about our spaces, like the foundry building, spaces that we'll never have back again, or the Volpe project and plan, how we can work with the administration, how they can guide us, how they can shepherd us, and how we can relay our concerns in a consensus-based way, how this chamber can be a place of discussion and ideation, not of finality and brevity. Granted, I think we should all probably be brief in these statements, but I don't mean, I mean that the process, the process itself does not have to end at 6:00 PM or 8:00 PM. The process must only achieve a better Cambridge and an equitable Cambridge, something that has eluded us for a long time. And there's smart minds, there's experience in the community, and there's goodwill in all of these council seats and in all of the administration seats. And lastly, I hope what I... And lastly, I hope what I don't hear, I hope what Louis is able to graduate into in this role and what many before him, including Rich, have done very often for us, I don't want to hear that Cambridge can do anything because we have the money and that we're lucky and it's an embarrassment of riches and all the wonderful things that I agree with, but then I don't want to hear that if we start to do those things, that it's going to raise taxes. We're spending half a billion, two-thirds of a billion dollars on our bond schedule for schools, I think that's great, we talked about having a debt, a borrowing plan for $32 million over the next year, I believe Louis said in some of his comments. What does that 32 go to? Does it go to the foundry? Does it go to the priorities we, as a council, have set? Do we have control over some of that bonding? Will we be proactive in planning and goal-setting? I sure hope we will. I hope that we can achieve the things that we've set out to do as a council without being cowed by the threat of higher taxes or the fear of higher taxes. I hope that we can establish fair taxes, low taxes, equivalent taxes as they are now for all of our residents. I hope we keep them low, the lowest in the state, I've heard. I hope we continue that for our residents, especially those who are house-rich and cash-poor. But then I also hope that we take a serious look at those nonprofits, those equity projects, and those priorities of ours, to achieve them in very short order, and that's a tall order for Louis, that is, and those are big shoes to fill, Mr. Rossi, but I'm sure that we'll be able to have an honest and diligent discussion about what we need to do even better to be able to achieve those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mazin. Pleasure, the council.
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Deveraux.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Threw you to my colleagues, I guess I say. I've been doing a lot of thinking this week in particular with this decision, and also with some of the events and forums I've attended as part of the annual Hub Week, and it really has made me think a lot about the future, the future not just of this city, but the future of this world. This week, I attended a forum at MIT that was entitled "The History and Future of Innovation in Massachusetts." It was sponsored by the Mass Historical Society. And then the next day, yesterday in fact, I attended an event, a talk by Robin Chase, who's a Cambridge resident, the founder, co-founder of Zipcar, and now is a major thought leader. And she talked about the changes that we're going to be experiencing in the blink of an eye in our economy, the global economy, climate change, it's happening a lot faster than we can think. And one of the exercises she does when she speaks, and she speaks all across the country, even at the White House, is to ask everyone in the room after she's given her talk, which is a fairly sobering talk, to close their eyes and to ask, "Do you think that we can achieve these changes through evolution or revolution?" And she asks "revolution" second, and then she says, "Leave your hands up and open your eyes." And she says that every audience that she addresses, even at the White House, 95% of the hands are still up for revolution. So, the systems that we have globally in America, in Massachusetts and Cambridge, are not the ones that are going to achieve the changes that we need to make without revolution, and I hope it's not violent revolution, I hope it's thought revolution, and I hope it's back to innovation. One of the points that they made at the MIT talk was that Massachusetts has had four major, you know, economic upheavals, and we've always managed to innovate our ways, our way out of this, and that at the end of the day, it's taken a lot of courage. Courage to challenge the orthodoxy, courage to get out of our comfort zone, courage to stretch, courage to question our priorities, even if they're considered the best practices of the era, even if we are a model for the rest of the country or even the rest of the world in some areas, to push ourselves, to reinvent ourselves and to create even better practices. So, we can't rest on our laurels, because speaker after speaker told us that our success, even our, you know, our very existence is incredibly fragile. So, we really need leaders, and I'm not speaking only of a city manager, because that's placing an awful lot of responsibility on the shoulder of one person. We need leaders in the community, we need leaders in this chamber, we need leaders to join with us and help us make those changes. So, you know, until yesterday, I had intended to vote for a candidate that I thought I would help us in this room, as the city's policymakers summon the courage to be bolder than we've been, and to be a partner, to help us be our better selves. We are, you know, we are the policymakers, I think, you know, in some of the communication that we've received, there is some confusion about what the role of the city manager is, what the role of the council is, who makes the policy, who executes it, how that dance works. One of the candidates asked me if, you know, if I felt that relationship was that the city manager is the council subordinate, if the city manager is the partner, or if the city manager is in charge, and I said, "Well, I hope it's, you know, that we're partners." And so, you know, today, we have a choice of two excellent candidates. One of them we're on a first-name basis with, has been evident tonight, and, you know, when I was running for office, I said I would, I hope that we would take seriously the chance to bring in a fresh perspective when we hired our next city manager, that we owed it to ourselves. I've, you know, in my short time on the council, I've been extremely impressed with the work that Mr. Rossi has done. It's, you know, it's amazing, and I want to echo everyone's thanks for his decades of service, his intelligence, his compassion, his open-mindedness, his willingness to listen and his willingness to make hard choices. But I still believe, at the end of the day, that change would be healthy for us. That said, the process that we put in place, and I do have a few questions about that process, like Nadine has mentioned, the process that we put in place has failed essentially to yield us a candidate from the outside that I think that we can trust with these big opportunities, and as others have said, we have a very highly respected and very competent leader in Mr. Di Pasquale, whose commitment to Cambridge is unquestioned, his integrity is rock-solid. I received emails from several friends whose children he coached in Little League, one of them brought tears to my eyes, hands down. He was a great coach and mentor to those young people, and that says a lot. The game is changing for us, though. Baseball's rules, I think, are still the same, I'm not a huge baseball fan, but I think there are going to be a whole lot more curveballs, and they're going to come fast, and so I hope that when Louis is our next city manager, that he will be willing to partner with us as we grapple with these challenges, because the old rules that he has played by and that he has managed so well over the years to bring us such success in the financial dimension may not be adequate. So, I, you know, it's a big responsibility, it's the council's biggest job. I'm new at this, so I'm, you know, I want everyone to know that I gave this a tremendous amount of thought. I haven't slept a lot this week, not only because there have been so many meetings and so many other things to think about and so many emails to answer, but I have given it a lot of thought, and I will support Louis with my colleagues, and I look forward to working with him. I know that he really wants this job and that he's a competitive guy, and that I think he will listen, and I think his goal is to be an even better city manager than his predecessor. So, that's going to be, it's going to be hard to do, and I hope that we can support him so that he can succeed in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Deveraux. Councilor Carlin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say in the beginning that the process that David Marr and the mayor put together was an excellent process. I regretted that I couldn't be on the committee of four councilors who worked with residents and businesspeople to select the finalists, but I totally agree that the three finalists were a good group of people to consider, each having strengths in areas and weaknesses, perhaps, in others, after all, they're human. It's, I have, this might be heresy to say in Cambridge, but I have a belief that any thriving entity needs outside perspective periodically. That's not saying that what we've had is not great, it's just that you need that enrichment, a different way of doing things, and that's why, and I told Louis this on Friday, that I was going to vote for someone else in the first round, and I also said, "But Louis, you're going to win, that's pretty obvious." And I actually felt that a long time ago, that it was pretty obvious, given his record. So, each candidate, whether they might have been weak in the first public forum in person, you saw, at least in one candidate who's still in the running, a different person, more relaxed and very sharp with very good ideas. I happen to have a working relationship with another candidate who's withdrawn, that I can't talk about, but just to say, I was highly impressed with him, and although there were sayings being whispered that he was not good to people, what I saw as a lowly consultant refutes those comments. We, what concerns me, and Louis and I spoke about this, is that this, for three years now, and hopefully it'll happen soon, we've not set goals. The goals in the past were not specific as a council, and that although affordable housing is our number-one priority, we put less than 3% of our budget into it. And I just don't get that, and I brought this up three years in a row, and I keep being told, "Well, in the future, in the future." The golden era is now. Recession's occur in the country every eight years. Well, it's the eighth year, that's not saying a recession is coming, but the golden era might not continue, which I guess you could say is a plus, because Louis could handle that better than any. What I do love about Louis, and he alluded to it, or came right out and said it, is that he wants to reach out to residents everywhere. He wants each of them to feel this is their home, this is their city, and that their words are listened to, and I don't necessarily think that hasn't been the case the last three years. In fact, I think Rich Rossi has gone out of his way to open communication and meet with anybody. But the fact that Louis focused on that, to me, was impressive. But I must add that of all the emails and personal conversations I had, they favored a person who is withdrawn by about two to one. And again, I think that's more an outside person with a background in affordable housing and physical planning than anything else. So, I think Mr. Featherston was extremely articulate and bright in person when we met in groups of three councilors with him, and that didn't necessarily come across in the first public meeting. In the second meeting, he was better and not as much as in shock with this whole new world and perspective and deep, complex questions. Louis has many things going for him, including the care of the council, and he's promised a lot. I have no doubt he intends to meet all those promises head-on, and that's where we are. So, I also will be voting for Louis. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Carlin. Councilor Mazin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to just pick up on two things that I neglected to do. One is to acknowledge and thank Donna Lopez and Ms. Paula Crane, who helped us tremendously during this process, and I think I did not adequately acknowledge and thank Sheila Kitty Rossin for all of the fine work as the co-chair of the screening committee, and then has been extremely helpful to me over this five-month process, six-month process, in making sure that everything was on time and being able to be delivered. You know, I think that, I just want to touch on the process itself and say that I think that the process resulted in three very highly qualified candidates, and I think that, like all of us, each of them has strengths and each of them has weaknesses, and I think we got to see some of that in this process. In the end, I am picking up on a word that the vice mayor mentioned, to me, in the end, this comes down to the word "fit." Who is the right fit at the right time for our city? And I think that, you know, when I think of Louis Di Pasquale, you know, his passion, his commitment, his love of the city is quite evident in everything he does, and I think that you can see that in the way that he talks about the city, and I think Louis completely understands where we are at this juncture, and I think it's a very significant juncture that we're at right now. I think when we look at some of the biggest issues facing this community today, the issue of affordable housing, the issue of income inequality, and how working-class families are struggling to stay in Cambridge, Louis gets it, and, you know, I think that everybody here has made very good points, and we could look at this, and we probably all do look at this slightly different and from a different vantage point, but at this time, my belief is, is that Louis Di Pasquale is the right person to continue us through the time that we are in right now, and a time where I think we are seriously looking at the issue of affordable housing. You know, and I will say, I have heard firsthand the passion that Louis has when he talks about families and the struggles that they have in this community, the commitment that he has around diversity in this, in this community is something that I think we could all learn from. And so, for me, I think that this process has been extremely positive, because somebody else mentioned it on this side of the room, and I can't remember who it was, but, you know, we know people, we see their interaction with people, we see the work that people do, but sometimes, we may not think about that person in another job or another position. And when Louis announced that he wanted to be the city manager, I have to be honest, that I stopped and I said to myself, "Now, is that the right move for him? Is it the right move?" And my feeling, throughout this process, he has demonstrated that this is the right move for him, and it's the right move for us to make at this time. So, I'm very pleased to support Mr. Di Pasquale. At the same time, I thank and acknowledge, I think, the tremendous effort of the other candidates who put their name forward and the courage that they had in order to really think about ways that they could help us in Cambridge, and I think that, you know, I just want to mention one thing, that I think that it also causes us to look at who we have in Cambridge, the staff and the commitment and the leadership that we have in Cambridge. And one thing that I kept hearing over and over again from people from across the country and other cities was how well-resp- and other cities was how well-respected the city of Cambridge leadership is in other circles. And we should, we should remember that. And this is, I believe, a good day, and we're going to have many, many good days ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ma. So let me just make my concluding remarks or my remarks before we go to the vote. I must say, we should be excited. I feel like I've seen more excitement in this room over the tax rate. But we should be excited because Cambridge is very extraordinary. We are, and when you look at Cambridge in terms of the present, because of the leadership that we've had, we are a very good place. I mean, people want to be, they want to live in Cambridge, they want to work in Cambridge, they want to visit Cambridge just so they can enjoy what goes on here. And we should be excited about that. And I think through that excitement, because Cambridge is such an extraordinary place, we were able to have what I would, I call a rich experience where people wanted to come and apply to be in Cambridge. I had the pleasure to serve in this city since 1980. I have worked with five superintendents, hired two of them. And I can tell you, when I match that process to this one, the processes were very similar, a lot of engagement, a lot of outreach, a lot of participation to yield good candidates. And I think we certainly did this. And so I feel very pleased and excited because we are so, in such a good place in terms of our present, I think Mr. Rossi, I think he's here somewhere, for the work that he's done and brought to the city. And now it's time for us to kind of look for the future. Where do we want the future of Cambridge to be? And how we, we should be excited and direct and engaged about what we want to do going five, 10, 15, 50 years from now. I want to pause just to thank those that got involved, starting with Councilor Ma for taking on, you know, as the chair of government operations, taking on this job of shepherding through this hiring process. I want to thank the individuals who put their hat in the ring to vie for this position. I often say that, you know, this is the job that everyone, it's a hard job, and so that's why not everybody wants to do it. So very important, robust, good candidates came forward to apply. I also want to thank the screening committee for giving their time, their energy, their expertise to vet the candidates that came forward. And also to the members of the public for weighing in on what has been, I think unquestionably one of the most consequential issues before us, the hiring of our city manager. In the last few weeks, the city council, the people of Cambridge have started to become acquainted with three finalists for this job. And I think each of them brought tremendous assets, skills, experience to the table. And while most of us are familiar with applying for a job and going through a whole interview process, one has to say, if you come to Cambridge and you really do go through a thorough vetting and public process, and being willing to put yourself under the glare of the public, spotlight as Mr. Featherston did, as Mr. D. Piscuali did, and as the candidate who later demurred have done, I think it's impressive that these individuals have, would put themselves through such a strong and robust process. So as I weigh the choices before me, I want to know, let people know that I didn't get to this decision easy. I didn't lose a lot of sleep over it, as maybe did Council Devereaux. I had other things to lose sleep over. But I do, I do understand the intensity of thought that one comes to and participates in. You know, in an ideal world, the city manager has to be energetic, collaborative, creative, a dynamic individual in their own right, with their own vision of how they see Cambridge and how it should be run. But someone who also has to be open to other ideas, the ideas of others. This individual must be able to lead their staff and be respected by their staff, inspire their colleagues, and continually be ready to meet the unique challenges and opportunities that our city has to offer. This person has to be knowledgeable and have an appreciation for the kind of community Cambridge has been over several decades. But also have a sense of what kind of community Cambridge can and should be going forward. And certainly, this person must be able to successfully engage and interact with nine very opinionated people, very enthusiastic bosses, and do this seven days a week, 365 days of the year. Some of the things that I am looking at when I look at who is our potential next city manager will be the assurance that the candidate, the individual, will pay great attention to creating a diverse, collaborative, and supportive workforce in the city. Someone that's going to be fair and clear to how to find the path to success and the achievement of every city employee. One where there is no wage equity gap between men and women. One which every employee has the opportunity to rise as far as their talents, abilities, and ambitions will take them. I want to be sure that we create an environment where small grievances are addressed and resolved rather than allowed to fester. I want to be sure that we have a workforce that reflects the diversity of our city. I want Cambridge to be a model in terms of promoting and nurturing the talent that exists amongst us. And I think we've made those strides toward that in recent years, but we still have many rivers and bridges to cross. And I'm committed to working with our next city manager to help us get to where we need to be. I want our next city manager to be aggressive as possible in working around the issues of affordable housing. Far too many of my friends, our friends and family members have moved out of Cambridge over the past 20 years. And I give great credit for our outgoing city manager on the work that he has put into helping preserve and create affordable units in the city. But we know we need to be better, we need to be faster, we need to be bolder, and we need to find a new way of tackling what is one of the premier, or premier challenges facing our community. I want our next city manager to be open to new ideas in how we operate as a municipal government and take a look at how we engage with the community and each other with fresh eyes. With each new term, we, each are new city councilors, and with each new city manager, we have a terrific opportunity for self-reflection, course correction, and an opportunity to take stock of what works, what doesn't work, and what might need some adjustments or improvement. I know that we cannot change things overnight, but it doesn't happen, and it doesn't happen with just one person. But I am genuinely excited about the opportunities that we have in front of us. This is, you know, for someone who has served this city for such a long time, I have never had the opportunity but once to hire a city manager. It was a good vote. It was a vote I stood up to and for. There were a lot of detractors around that choice, but I'm glad to say that the person that we chose then proved them all wrong, and I was very pleased about that. And I think that the person that we choose now will do the same thing. So this evening, I will be voting for Mr. Louis D. Piscuali. And I truly look forward to working together to build on all the things that we already do so well, but to go and find new ways to improve that what has gone well. You know, my colleague on the school committee, Fred Fantini, would always say, "The enemy of best is good." So we not only want to do our good job, we want to do our best job. And so having said that, I will yield the floor to, I believe, Councilor Toomey, who wants to make a motion. I want to recognize Mr. Harding from our school committee, thank him for being here. Councilor Toomey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move that the Cambridge City Council make an offer of employment as city manager to Mr. Louis D. Piscuali, conditioned upon the successful negotiation of a contract with terms agreeable to both parties.
There's a motion on the floor by Councilor Toomey. This will require a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Councilor Carlin.
Yes.
Councilor Chung.
Yes.
Councilor Devereaux.
Yes.
Councilor Kelly.
Yes.
Councilor Ma.
Yes.
Councilor Mazin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGovern.
Yes.
Councilor Toomey.
Yes.
Mayor Simmons.
Yes.
And the motion to offer an employment to, as city manager, to Louis D. Piscuali has passed by an affirmative vote with nine in favor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would like to, given that historic vote, I would like to offer a motion that the city council appoint Lisa Peterson as an acting city manager commencing on October 1st, 2016, and continuing until a new city manager is appointed. And that during her appointment as acting city manager, that she be compensated with a weekly stipend of $1,000 in addition to her regular salary. Is there discussion?
Uh, there is discussion.
Discussion. Councilor Mazin.
Is there any reason we wouldn't compensate her at the rate of the current city manager divided by 52, or 275 divided by 52?
Madam Mayor.
That's a question, I heard, Madam Mayor. Councilor Chung.
Just, I just, I think the, you asked about the before, the $1,000 brings, I guess, the salary up to the minimum that was advertised. So it just seemed like a good basis to pick the number on.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilor Carlin.
Yes.
Councilor Chung.
Yes.
Councilor Devereaux.
Yes.
Councilor Kelly.
Yes.
Councilor Ma.
Yes.
Councilor Mazin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGovern.
Yes.
Councilor Toomey.
Yes.
Mayor Simmons.
Yes.
And the motion to appoint Lisa Peterson as the acting city manager commencing October 1st carries on an affirmative vote with nine in favor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilor Ma would like to offer another motion. Councilor Ma.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That the city council requests that the city enter into a contract with Elizabeth Valerio and John Foskett of Deutsch Williams to advise the city council in negotiating a contract with the prospective city manager.
There is a council order on the floor. Is there discussion? Councilor Mazin.
Why this firm and what are our goals?
Councilor Ma.
So the, the firm is the same firm that we have used to negotiate Mr. Rossi's contract and kind of reshape that contract. We've been working with this firm over a few years now. It's outside, outside legal counsel. You don't necessarily want to have in-house legal counsel negotiating a contract for what will then be their boss, so you bring in a third party. Ms. Valerio and Mr. Foskett are both very familiar with the reshaping of the contract and have advised the council on how to do that. In addition, both, Mr. Foskett, I'm sorry, Mr. Foskett is the lawyer that was hired by the school department to negotiate the new contract with the new school superintendent also.
Councilor Mazin.
Thank you. That's, that's helpful. Do we have a goal for what the plus means, and do we have a term length of the contract? I think that we should probably have some kind of guidance for them before we hire them.
Councilor Ma. Do you have response?
The first step in the process will be, you bring the attorney in. We will have a meeting. We thought we had a time, but there's a conflict. I had Sandra going around the room. We're going to have a meeting, hopefully next week, where the nine city councilors will meet in executive session with the attorney, and we will go over the parameters at that time. So we will develop the length of, desired length of the contract, the salary range. The attorney then will deal with Mr. D. Piscuali's attorney, and that's how the negotiation will, will occur.
Okay.
Councilor Mazin.
I don't want to get too pedantic here, but again, in terms of the order of things, generally, one would ask a vendor if they feel that they can achieve certain parameters before hiring them. Are you confident? Can you hit the marks we're trying to hit? Is this feasible? What's common in the industry? And then you hire someone to achieve those things, and you achieve that by a deeper dive into the basis and into the details. To hire someone and then say, "Do you think you can achieve this?" Then, we certainly want a partner who feels competent to achieve our goals, and I don't know the first thing about these folks. Will they be competent to achieve our goals?
I think that, and I think that probably, and I'm looking here, two, four, five, six, I believe six of us have worked with this firm in one capacity or another. They have been extremely responsible in helping. What I would, what I would back up and say is, is that I think that the contract that Mr. Rossi has, his base contract, is extremely different than that of what Mr. Healy had at the time. And that was done on the advice and the work over a period of time with this firm in how to reshape a current-day contract for a municipal leader in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Councilor Chung.
I just, as one of the people that was in the process, I don't want to go into detail in open, in open session because we're about to enter into the negotiation. But in my experience, I agree with you. And I think in my, in working with the firm, they were very good about helping the council achieve its goals, which may be in conflict at this, for this decision with, you know, the person we're hiring, because we're on the upside of the negotiation table. But I think they were, they were fair, they were thorough, and they were, I think they were very good in accomplishing a lot of things. So I would encourage you to meet with them in the meeting and bring them up directly with them, because I think they'll be impressed. Thanks.
Roll call.
I was going to ask for further discussion, but I guess I won't. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Carlin.
Yes.
Councilor Chung.
Yes.
Councilor Devereaux.
Yes.
Councilor Kelly.
Yes.
Councilor Ma.
Yes.
Councilor Mazin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGovern.
Yes.
Councilor Toomey.
Yes.
Mayor Simmons.
Yes.
And the motion carries on affirmative vote with nine in favor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's a pleasure of the city council.
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Toomey.
No. We haven't done this for a while, but this was a very important vote, and we're not meeting for another, I believe, three weeks. So at this time, I'd like to move reconsideration, hoping the same will not prevail.
Councilor Toomey moves reconsideration. So we first have to move.
Move suspension of the rules, sorry. Grab the reconsider.
Before we vote.
Can I just say it?
Please.
Thank you. Councilor Toomey moves suspension of the rules in order to move reconsideration, hoping the same will not prevail. Discussion. Councilor Mazin.
Okay. So first, this confused me the first several times that we did it, so I just want to remember or discuss how it works. We move reconsideration. We all vote no, so that it cannot be reconsidered tomorrow, right? So that's just to make things final. We do this when there's an urgent deadline or when something is so important that one for optics or for logistics wouldn't want to reconsider it. I also think it's safe to say that in this case, because we've all just spoken on Louis D. Piscuali's behalf, that it would be very unlikely that there would be a reconsideration. And I just wanted to put that out there, but.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
On suspension. On suspension. Councilor Carlin.
No.
Oh, suspension.
Oh, yes, sorry. I still don't get it.
It's okay.
I'm for Louis.
Councilor Chung. Councilor Devereaux.
Yes.
Councilor Kelly.
Yes.
Councilor Ma.
Yes.
Councilor Mazin.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGovern.
Yes.
Councilor Toomey.
Yes.
Mayor Simmons.
Yes.
And the rules are suspended on affirmative vote of nine in favor.
On reconsideration, hoping the same will not prevail. That's a yes vote if you do not want to reconsider.
Reconsideration is for all of the items that were adopted.
It's, did I say yes? Well, you know.
Okay.
It's the air in here.
On the motion to reconsider, Councilor Carlin.
No, you don't want to.
I wanted to say no.
Councilor Chung. Councilor Devereaux.
No.
Councilor Kelly.
No.
Councilor Ma.
No.
Councilor Mazin.
No.
Vice Mayor McGovern.
No.
Councilor Toomey.
No.
Mayor Simmons.
No.
In the motion to reconsider, all the votes taken tonight fails on an affirmative vote with zero in favor and nine recorded in the negative.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Pleasure of the city council.
Move to adjourn.
On a motion by Councilor Toomey to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, the meeting is adjourned.